Order and start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Review and approve the agenda. Any additions?
Just one major typo on Greg.
Oh, yes.
Unless he changes his name and I don't know about it. Okay, okay.
Do we need to add errors and omissions, assessors there and omissions somewhere down the line?
So I move to approve the agenda as a matter of.
I just wanted to make a thing I'm gonna read or if I can get approval, wanna read three or four items off of our public meeting rules and procedures in that, so.
So again, I'll move to approve the agenda as a matter of.
Thank you.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Review of the June 24th meeting. Any additions, corrections?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What was the...? Okay, I guess this is a good time as any to cover. We reapproved this, our meeting rules and procedures. And as such, the public must be afforded reasonable opportunity to give its opinion on matters considered by the select board so long as order is maintained. Such public comments is subject to the reasonable rules established by the chair of the select board. And at the beginning of each select board meeting, there shall be up to fifteen minutes afforded for open public comment. Each person shall be limited to three minutes unless by majority vote of the select board increases the time. By majority of the vote, the select board may increase the time for public comment and may adjust the agenda items accordingly. A select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, not a public meeting. Public comment on issues discussed by the select board, if not offered during the open public comment period, may be offered during the meeting with the permission of the chair or by majority vote. Such comments submitted shall be limited to three minutes unless by majority vote the select board increases the time for public comment. And the general ground rules according to decorum of the board and citizens and guests. Citizens and guests will only speak when recognized by the chair. They will speak from the podium, one speaker at a time. And I will not interrupt the speaker. I will disagree politely and address the issue, not the personality. I will come prepared to participate. I will practice open-mindedness. I will treat each person with dignity and respect. And if it's okay with the board, maybe if we ask the person speaking to give their name when they come up and where they live. Unless, nobody has any. That might be the only thing I would like to. Not everybody knows everybody anymore. Okay. Open public comment. Greg, you're gonna speak later on and Megan, Kia?
No.
Nothing at this time? Joan? Yes, I... Yep. Yes, Joan?
I'm nothing at this time.
Okay. Carol?
No.
Nothing at this time, okay. John?
Nothing at this time.
And Joe?
I have a question.
Yes. Thank you.
The tax rate and the wastewater are not on this agenda. I don't see that there's been a meeting. When is that going to be set?
Soon as Siri and I get worked up, the accessory have worked up all the numbers and do a tax rate. We don't have it yet.
When... So we're at the 8th of July and the first payment is due when? August?
First payment will be due thirty days after you receive your tax bills.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Move on to guests. Greg and Megan, you're here about the Mortimer Proctor Trust Fund grant, application for the rink.
Yeah. You probably have a nice thick packet that we put together for you. We did put a bunch of bids out to try to get some things. We wanna rearrange the countertop and replace that and the skate storage in there. The skate storage is for right now, all of our skates are plastized, mostly plastic. And the ones that we used to have, used to fold leather and be able to fit them into the cupboards, none of them fit. If you look, they're all, some of the pictures will show you, they just don't fit anymore. And when you have a bunch of people coming in, people leaving with winter coats, the little hallway where the door is, is a so we put out, we put out requests and talked it over the winter where we would like it and you should see two drawings. One's the old one and one's the new one. We can increase the space that's there for people to use and more have more people in there. That was the major plan of removing the countertop to the back and the back wall where we can do that. It leaves the windows open for the parents that now stand in front of the big window that we put in last year. And the little windows are great to see the things.
Also, it was a, last year being our first year doing it, it was a huge safety issue and, like, I don't know how they've done in years past, but like I was on the counter for some of those skates that were above your head. And as you're pulling them down and there's other people or there's kids on the other side of the counter, I mean, that's, that was a huge safety issue for me. But it was also, you've got people coming in, you've got people going out, you have people getting skates and snacks all at the same time. And it was just so congested. So moving it to the back and having a wall that it's just a little bit taller than me, that would be skate so we wouldn't have to worry about skates falling. And you can fit, I think Brian had it as 220 pairs of skates.
220 pair, size 11 skates, which we don't have. Would fit there. So even the little ones, we can put into a three thing zone. And it would be where the blades would not be dullled because we're pulling them in them off a shelf. They go in between the groove and the wood. If you see the rack that we put up there, that's just a picture of what we wanna build.
And we would do the demo and Brian would build a skate rack, volunteer time. It would just be the cost. And then we got the cost of the countertops and the cupboard, the cupboards and the benches. And we did ask for a heat and cooling pump if that's something. Like when we did that, now that it's open, we have it open year round. The other day it was eighty-nine in there, the night we had the dance. It was disgusting. Like, and it was just... And when we've done other, like you can't do a movie night or games in there right now because it's just so hot. We, you know, if you do it later at night, it's better, but still, it's just so, that's what we put that in there for and it's energy efficient. It's an energy. And it just needs upgrading and new stuff. The buildings just, I mean, for instance, if we hadn't been open and doing the Babe Ruth games, we wouldn't have seen the holes that those bees have put into that building. They have destroyed a lot of that trim on the building. And the guy said, well, in years past, how come this hasn't been taken care of? That was his first question to us. And we said, this is the first year that we've opened it in offseason, so no one's probably noticed it just because usually people aren't there till November, until March. And he said they usually hatch in May, so that's what, the bees have been a big problem there. But just, we'd just like to upgrade it and see, you know.
Plus the countertops, at least twenty-five years old.
They're duct taped together right now.
A lot of the edges are duct taped or taped on to keep them going.
And it's a great facility that can be used for so many different things.
Do you guys have any questions?
There's a low pipe when you get down the cellar stairs.
Yeah.
Get rid of that.
Yeah.
Wish we could.
That one does hurt.
Yeah.
Megan doesn't have any problem with that.
No, I do not. So if you guys have any questions, that's what we're thinking. It would just, and then you'd have, as you're walking in, you'd have the benches and then you'd have the picnic tables, then they'd come get the skates. But it'd be open, so it wasn't all jammed together at once. And instead of our backs being to the windows, they would be forward. And down the line, we'd like to get two cameras, like, to put outside in the trees so you can see. Because even when we were right there by the window, there was still that blind spot and that's where we had issues last year.
Put on the corner so that we could see a 270 degrees of the rink.
With a little...
And with a TV, which we can raise the money for them. We've looked on Amazon.
It's not that much.
Roughly, it's like 270 bucks. We can do another potluck and fundraiser and say it's for the cameras.
Yeah.
And they'll probably, probably get it, so.
No, I think we're, it sounds that we're in, in favor of moving this forward.
That's a good price?
Yes.
Yeah. I tried to get, we tried to get a lot of bids on the cabinets and the countertop.
It was a small bid.
There's one place in Rutland that does countertop, or two, and it's home deep and you really can't get a competitive price. But countertops is giving us pretty much cost on the foot of what we're doing.
Cause he, his family.
Cause he knows Mike and he's been there. Mike's giving us a decent price for a finished carpenter building out cabinets for the rink. So.
He lives in town.
He lives in town and he's, you know, is willing to do it, so. The plumber was great. I mean, we only, we called many plumbers and he was the only one who came out and did the bids, you know.
And then electrical is Jeff.
Electrical is Jeff because he's the town and he already knows the basement. I didn't wanna try to find somebody else to go, oh, this is wrong. I'm like, well, our electrician says it is not, you know, so.
It's a small job, so.
Well, that's what we got. We had Marcial Builders and they're like, this is too small of a job for us. And so that's why we started going, you know, we asked Mike, him being in town and doing it, and he goes to the rink. So that's, that was our.
Want to have a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Sure.
Just a quick question. So the heat pump, is that included in there?
Yes.
It's included in the 14.5. We did put it, we put it in at the very end. We were talking about it and I...
But then when we had those couple nights.
We had a couple of hot nights. I'm like, we'll see if we can get it approved. This is the last thing that I want, basically, but it will make that building much more accessible for summer events and special events. Cause people are like, can we have a birthday party here? And we're like, well, yeah, but it's a little hot, but you can, you know, get a, do the town approval thing and go through that, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to the application. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Great, let's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for all your detail that you gave us here.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Fourteen...
Fourteen five thirty-seven.
Yeah, fourteen six is the total I think about.
Fourteen five thirty-seven.
Okay, John, would you come up to the podium? So we can...
I'm John Johnson, living on 31 Chandler Park. First of all, these potholes in this town are getting out of hand, all right? And I don't know why. I can't see why the highway department can't do it. I mean, Bruce, you drive one right by a pothole that you probably could sink a battleship in, but that's all right. You probably can't see it. Also, stop signs. There's quite a few stop signs. The signs on the pole are like this, but they're like this. Can't we straighten them a little bit? Can we just push them? These are the things that the town people are looking at. And I, you know, I had an issue with my property, all right? And that big washout that you guys had here, all right? I had a washout up by my house. The town came with the broom and guess where all the material went? It didn't go in back of a truck. It didn't go in the middle of the road. It went on my property. I called staying two months later. He come up, he saw, he gonna take care of it, all right? Well, first of all, they come out and pick up the stuff they wanted to pick up, the piles. The rest of the stones and stuff are all over my lawn. But that's fine. And that's how you treat a taxpayer. I called that unacceptable. They could have swept their stuff in the middle of their road and picked the stuff up instead of sweeping on somebody's property. I think you people should ride around and see what's going on in this town. We got a lot of potholes and they haven't been touched. And some of them still got red marks on them. I mean, I do pay my taxes and I pay a lot. And that's getting me discouraged when I come home and see this. I mean, you've got three guys. There's only twenty miles of road, only twenty miles. It's not like Rowland City or Chittenden or Pittsford. When I go to them towns, them guys, you could see them. I can't find these guys. I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm just saying. I go through the town, I don't see it. Bruce, I have freedom of speech and I wanna say it. So I'm just saying, you guys gotta look at this. Really look at it and see what's going on. There's a lot of potholes. And it should be done with hot mix. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Good stuff, Stan. Anything?
On my end is, we will be having swim lessons this year. We did find a swim instructor that can do them. And I talked with Heidi this morning. She will get me a schedule, what day will be. We got a qualified swim instructor on staff. I don't wanna talk to you, no.
Oh, good.
Well, that's the only thing I've got on, on my side right now, other than the Fourth of July is over with and vacations are over with and we have a full crew back to work again next week, so.
I've heard a lot of positive things too about the mosquito spraying, that people, like, we talked about, people are outside, people are doing things. The pool and the rink and everything, you know, people are out there doing things all the time. So I think it's been really beneficial to everybody.
Yes. No, I've seen seemingly a lot more people outside because they're not getting eaten alive. And that's good, good to see. Got a lot of opportunity in town and good to see people up. Move on into the highway department.
Bruce, can I say one more thing? I know you don't like it, Bruce, but can I say one more thing? I looked up on State and I talked to people in my area and they said this, all right, which Stan denied what I said. Any tree limb or anything that's hanging over on the town right of way, you have the right to cut it off on the town right of way. You don't have the right to cut the tree down if it's on somebody else's land. But you have the right to cut anything that's all hanging over. You have the right to do that. And I think over by Pine Street, you've got some issues that should be trimmed. I just thought to be aware of that. But you do have a right. It's just like a homeowner on, on a fence line or a tree's hanging over. You can chop it off. It's interfering with your... And he said, no. So I understand and I don't wanna hear no more. Thank you.
Okay.
Highway report was in your packet. We are keeping track of Reynolds Reservoir and the high water and the beavers that are working up there. We do have permission to shoot the beaver if we can find it. Brush it, Beaver Pond was trucking it away, cleaning it up the area. West Street Sewer Service, this is the, an issue that goes back to last fall where we have two homes who are still connected to the, to the storm drain. They've been located, smoke tested. They went up to dig one of them, found a water service line instead of the sewer line. And so pulled out, fixed, fixed the water service line and pulled out. It'll be back in there again, hopefully this week, to get that one taken care of. And then there's one other one. Catch, check and catch bases were heavy rain covered. There's a tree down on South Street. They're out with their weed whacker doing guardrails along with doing the roadside trimming, so.
Last year, one of our guys got a nasty case of person up there weed whacking, so.
Yes. They have talked about how to protect themselves. You know, there is special soap that you can buy. There's also, if you really get to it, there's some pills, but hopefully they don't get that far. The big thing is using the antiseptic soap when you get done. Now, I'm at the pool, was a bee's nest. It kept going off, so now it is disconnected for right now.
How long?
Street signs and thank you, John, for the stop signs. I've seen a couple that are bent over and need to be straightened up. But it's not the highest priority, other than the appearance. They still work.
Stan, how long is, for this alarm at the pool? Is it, are we waiting until the bees are no longer there? Are we removing that?
Well, it's, it's cleaning up the bees, bees nest that was in the, in the alarm system.
Ah, it's in.
It wasn't these, they were nesting in the alarm and shorting it out.
Okay.
So it's, it's been taken care of. Mowing all the time, Beaver Pond Dam. Had been working, cleaning out the old box culvert, which is the main channel for discharge. There are some large rocks and stones and pieces of marble that have been dumped in there or pushed in there. It's working. It's taking the water right now, but it's a matter of getting it cleaned out. They were nice to the office staff and all the air conditioners. And they, wherever they have a chance, they're hauling sand from the sand pile up in the old salt shed now to the new sand pile, the new salt shed. So they're getting it out. That's part of our agreement with Fish and Game Club is that we remove the old sand pile as well as the building, as well as cleaning up all the trash that's on the site. So hopefully they will get that done by the end of July. Then again, they, doing the hill sections that you can't get a mower on, that's manual weed whacking. So they got the one on Main Street and High Street and they've got the one at the library pump station, so. The pending is roadside mowing, which is there at the waist. The sanitary sewer service is on West Street. Sweeping streets. One thing God added today was striping the white stripes for the crosswalks. Seem to have faded even worse. Normally, we do it once a year, just a couple weeks before school starts. But he feels we need to get out and pick some up. He did get some new pedestrian or crosswalk signs to put in front of the town office, which didn't have any. And also to put the roadside signs on Williams Street instead of putting the one in the middle of the road. He thinks they're more effective than the one in the middle of the road. My attitude is if you hit the one in the middle of the road, you got a dent in your car. But anyway.
And it goes away. The one on the side of the road would still be there.
Anyway, he's gonna put the roadside ones and especially on Main Street, which does not have the, the large pedestrian crossing signs. No overtime in the last couple weeks, a lot of vacation time.
FEMA?
Beaver, we are enrolled. I just put it in your package so you could update you. The applications have to be submitted by the 15th of July, which is next Monday. John has got all the numbers. We've kept the accounts separate for each of the sites, so we know what the labor is, what the materials are. It's a matter of filling in the form and submitting it. Hopefully it won't be as orderous as some of the ones were a few years ago, but we had to do it.
Yeah, and the, the state is very helpful in that. John and I had attended a two or three hour session up in Mendon on that. And they're willing to help if we need any. So it's nice to have a backup. If you've got any questions, they're, they're very proactive with us and they had FEMA people there. Went well. Anything else for highway?
Bruce? Number one is, is the salt shed completed and fixed where the issues were?
Yes.
Okay, they are. Also, how come we put, how come we're parking, parking equipment and stuff inside the salt shed? That's a no-no. You don't put any equipment inside, inside the salt shed. And there was equipment, brand new stuff inside the salt shed.
I don't believe there's any salt in there.
There is salt in it. So don't believe, believe it. I'm questioning that because salt, you know how it scatters. I know you don't, you wanna hit it, Bruce, but you know, it's, it's a piece of equipment that we paid for and you put them in the salt shed. That's not a way to do it.
Thank you. Okay. We haven't, they haven't come out with that yet. Is, are you aware, Stan?
About the bids?
Yeah.
We, we have submitted a request to be included at eight hundred and fifty tons in the state's bidding process. Last year was September before we had the results of the bids. And then the question is whether we wanna use, if the same supplier is the same supplier we had last, last year, whether we wanna accept that or one of the other bids that may be submitted. The issue last year was moisture and it was a lot of clogging up in the spreaders where we were spreading salt. But that'd be September for a decision on that.
Motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're into the Board of Water Commissioners. We had our report here from Simons. Anything that stands out? But anybody has any questions?
The only thing was the variable frequency drive.
Drive got put in?
Got put in. More expensive than what we had expected. One thing's not on here, could be under activities in progress, is they expect to do, start system flushing two weeks from today. I'll put an announcement in the, on the website, but also with the paper. They got two issues. One is system flushing, the other is pouring the hydrants to get any stuff out of the hydrants. And also painting the hydrants as they go through. So this is on there. Need to be on this one, but on there a list of things to get done.
I have a question. I just, I'm just confused. By the way, the wording maybe is just the way I'm reading it. On C, under the Willow hydrant, it says it meets flow requirements per model and it currently does not flow and is placed out of order. So I feel like it's...
This has been a quandary since last fall.
Right, I remember.
For some reason, there's a water line comes out of downward metal. It branches off and goes over to Elm, right there between two houses. The house that's closest to the branch... that's closest to the branch has adequate pressure where that hydrant is flowing. The next house down, it drops to fifteen PSI when you're flowing the hydrant. And you, and you, and you can't flow the hydrant and get five hundred gallons a minute without, uh, dropping the pressure below fif- twenty PSI. What the reason for it? They cut it, they cut out a section of the water pipe last year. They TV'd up and down and didn't find a problem. I haven't fathomed what the problem is. But the hydraulic model says it's, it's should have hit more than five hundred gallons a minute of that.
But they're testing it at the, at the residence house?
Yeah, they, they put a, uh, pressure gauge on the hy, the hose bit outside.
Okay, so there could be an issue there, or is it, did they?
It's, it's every house down the, down the line. So it, it's on their list of trying to solve the issue. Uh, the hydrant, as I say, does not flow when it should flow. Uh, talking with the fire department, uh, they wouldn't necessarily use that hydrant if they had a fire on Willow Street because they'd have to go by the fire to get to it, so. But they could go back to the one on Beach and pick that one up, which has adequate flow. So, but they're aware of it and it's tagged, so.
Thanks.
It would be nice to know why because it's a hydraulic mystery.
Anything else on the report? Uh, the, uh, Contract Six you have in your packet, they, um, this is their engineering, uh, contract with, uh, DuBois and King. Any questions?
This is a draft contract that was prepared after we completed the sixty percent review last week of the project. Uh, it's on your desk, it's at the state looking for approval. It's on your desk, uh, for approval, subject to state approval. And I would act on it unless the state has approved. They review the fees, the scope of work and things. Uh, so this one is for construction phase services. Uh, we need to have it in place before we start advertising. DuBois and King has already put out that portion of the project notifying the disadvantages and center rises, uh, which is part of this, this phase, but trying to speed up the process. It's a thirty day, they have to wait to get that done, and then they would be ready to advertise. So the idea is that we will be advertising thirty days. The idea is the state would approve or revise the agreement, specifically the dollars portions because of our weight. We have to measure whether the hours that they have committed to it are reasonable hours, whether dollars are reasonable dollars. Uh, the state has, uh, a supply, a good supply of prior contracts that they go, but the degree of difficulty and the degree of services that are required. So we gotta rely on them to approve the fee. Again, all of this is part of the bond issue. Hopefully the end of the bond issue, and that it's completed and wrapped up by next spring. So I would just be asked for approval, subject to review and approval of the state.
So can I ask a question about the contract and about the project? So it's difficult to hear you with the answer. Are you saying that it would take thirty days once you submit this for the state to review and approve it and then it would go out to bid, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying it takes thirty days for the BBE notification letters to read be out and back before they go to bid because that, those have to be included in the bid documents.
So you're looking at middle of August then?
Yes.
Are we actually doing this project this year?
I hope so.
Yes.
So if you're looking at August before you ever go out to bid, how is that even a realistic expectation to think you're doing this project? In my opinion, you're not. So if you're not, why, why would we be expending funds at this point from under the bond to have some review bids for a project that we wouldn't be doing? I mean, does the entire board think we're actually doing this project? I, I think that it's, um, disingenuous on one level if you do go forward now because this is not even relatively similar to the timeline that as a resident in that area that we were given. This is completely off the spectrum. So that's number one, and there's been no update about that. But number two, so you go forward and do this project and you tear up the roads or there's damage to the roads, how will that be repaired? Because it's highly unlikely by the time you finish this that the, um, asphalt plants will be open. So we're supposed to just continue to live like that until spring?
Let me go back and, and do one project, one portion at a time. The need to get the project done and completed is following the, uh, schedule set by the engineer and the state. This contract, whether we build it this year or next year, would still be in place.
But if you expend five thousand dollars for the bidding phase now, that's going to cover if you go through the bidding phase in August or September and it's going to cover it again in the spring when you do it twice?
I'm assuming there would be bidders, there would be low bidders, a contract would be awarded, a schedule would be worked out as to when the work was completed.
So you anticipate?
You're not throwing, you're not throwing anything away.
Wait, no.
You can assure us that going out to bid now, well, just let's, let's, for example, there are no low bids that come in, they're all high. And you have to go out to bid again? You have to expend five thousand dollars again?
Yes, if you have to go out to bid. If the, if the bids come in way above budget and there's not enough money to build it, there would have to be modifications to the plans, to the design, and go out to bid again. I'm assuming that the engineers estimate that they have on this is reasonable and that the bids will come within the estimate, but you don't know until you open bids.
Are you saying when you go out to bid that this project will not be completed till spring?
I don't know that it won't be completed till spring.
You just?
You just said.
Okay. So it, it's your expectation that this project will, could start in September and go September, October, November?
Until such time as we have a contractor, we will not know. We will not get a contractor unless we go out for bids.
Yep.
Bruce, how's the board feel when you put something off the bid?
John, do you want to come to the podium? Can you come up here?
Come out to the podium?
John?
How, how, how's the board feel when you, uh, put something out in bid in September and not, in August when all your contractors are trying to button up what they got? They're busy. I mean, the best time is.
I think we discussed all this at earlier meetings and I think the deadline, the date that we were looking at was like a September timeframe. So I think what Stan's saying is that when, if somebody comes to bid and we get high bids, it's not like we're, we have control over pushing it off till spring. You know, not everything's in our hands to be able to, to make the job happen in September, depending on where bids come in from.
The best time to put bids out.
And we're under guidelines here with the state as well, so.
Yep, the best time to put bids out is in winter time, people looking for work in the spring. They're looking for work, your contractors are looking for work. Right now, they're tied up, they're trying to get stuff done. With all this rain, everybody's behind. And so if I was going to bid on something, I'd just bid high. And if I get it, fine, if I don't, fine, I got enough work to keep me going till winter.
I, I have to disagree with you, this is not the timeline that we were given as residents.
I will agree, I'll agree with you, it's not the timeline.
So, so that's, so that, that statement is, is not true. So if you had talked about it at a prior meeting, the timeline that you had at that meeting is no longer the current timeline.
That's true. And it's not the select board or the town of Proctor's fault that the timeline has slipped. We still are in a.
I'm asking you a question, if you're going to end up expending money twice when you have an option that you could bid this later, at, what, what mandate are you under that you have to, uh, bid it? Currently at the project, if you decided to do the project in the spring?
I guess my question is, why would anybody want to stop the progress that started? We will get bids, we will have a knowledge then when we get it. If for whatever reason somebody feels it should be rebid, it'll be rebid. That's four, five thousand dollars out of a six hundred thousand dollar contract. It's not big money.
It's not what?
Big money.
Money. Dave, this is. Comments, we don't need that.
It's mine, man.
So would the people who, and I'm not, like where you live where the construction's being made, would you, would you prefer to have us not do this and wait till spring? And have the job, the project not done?
The conversation has been at this point, well, I think Mr. Hogan led the conversation, that he didn't foresee the project going, um, in the fall due to the late start and where the timeline had moved. And it seems like since that conversation, the timeline has moved further down now. You're talking about not having bids probably till the end of September that you're going to be looking at and awarding. And once you, once you open them, you have to send them to the state and have the state review them. So it's not unreasonable to think you're not, you're looking at October first as a start date, if you're lucky. So I think that there has to be consideration for people who live in this area that if you think you're going to be starting a project in the fall, I'm sorry, Bruce, this is upsetting for you, but the faces that you want to be dismissive to people about their tone and the words that they're using, I find it offensive when you make those faces when people are speaking. And I think it's dismissive of you to think that you could start a project and leave us torn up during winter months and come back in the spring. And I haven't heard anything that said that's not a possibility either. It's, all I've heard is we're on the train and the train is moving.
So I've had a question for a little while now. This is not the same as asking for the bids, this is just moving forward with the project, right?
Construction phase services.
Yeah, so we could still ask for bids for the spring, even going forward with these.
Yeah.
So it does, it's not that we're necessarily committing that we're going to start this in October because I do recall the conversation that we had about a month ago probably, that we might be looking at moving this out to when it would be more advantageous to get better bids, um, by putting it out to bid for a spring start as opposed to a fall start. I think both Tom and I talked about that at one point.
I heard that too.
So.
Or you could put it out for bids with the stipulation that the work will start, uh, April one of next year.
Right, so that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
So we still will offer bid, but we could change the contract that the start date is next year.
I think that'd be a smart thing to do.
So, but we've got to take a, a step in that direction, uh, now to.
Well, what I'm saying, I just want to clarify that by approving these two documents, we are not committing to having to go out to bid for the fall. We could always go out to bid and say that work will begin April one, April fifteen, May first.
Or you could go out for this next spring, but it would be nice to have a contractor on board, ready to do it. They are, the other, the second one is the operation maintenance manual, has nothing to do with Contract Six.
Right.
The second agreement.
Yeah, I think we, we've got to take a step. We, we're not going to, you know, break ground until we see what's going on. But, uh, we do need to get started and be ready, uh, for whatever happens.
So can we make a motion then to have, give you the approval to sign off on this, once you hear back from the state with their approval? And then we can open up to bid with the idea that it won't start till spring?
We, we could request that the bid documents indicate that work will, work will not commence before April one.
Right. So we can't wait then and put it out to bid in, like, January?
We could do it in January, but you could do it now and say the same thing.
Thing, yeah.
Do you, so, I, I mean, I'm kind of understanding the, the question here because if we put it out to bid now, I think, in my opinion, that prices are going to be higher than if we put it out to bid in January because people do have a full workload right now.
Possible, yeah.
And I think in January we may get a better price, rather than to put it out twice. We won't put it out twice then?
No.
We'll put it out once for bid, correct?
And we'll put a date on it.
With a date that it won't begin until spring.
If we add a date that construction will not start until April one of next year and go out for bids, that gives the contractor, he doesn't know what he's going to be doing next spring, this, this is a chance to get a job and he knows what he's going to be doing.
Yeah.
And whether you do it in September, open them, or whether you open them in January, I don't think makes a difference, but I'm not an expert in bidding, so I, I don't know. But whatever the board wants to do will be done. But whatever happens, we are still going to have to do the services that are in here.
Yeah. Let's look, you know, might be a contractor that's, this might be his great start for the, for the, for next spring. And he, he may price it as such, so.
So Lisa, does that kind of satisfy your concern?
I was trying to ask, I believe, except when I was asking, it seemed to be a disingenuous, uh, very combative conversation.
But, uh, we've, we've got to start somewhere and get, get the ball rolling and see what happens.
Okay, so I'll move to make a motion to have Stan have, um, be able to approve these, both of these agreements once the state has given you the authorization.
Now, the second agreement is the operations maintenance manual, we reviewed that. The state had a list of things that they wanted added to it that was not in the original scope. Part of that was doing GPSs on all hydrants and gate valves and curb stops, which jumped the price a little bit in here.
Curb stops too?
Yeah.
Once we know where they are. I mean, the problem is, is what they did was took the information they had, the state would like better, from two thousand mapping, the state would like better mapping. So they've been looking for GPSs on everything, and I think it's standard procedure with what they are asking for now.
So.
So this was. That's the second contract, yeah.
Yeah.
The smaller one, yes.
Yeah.
Judy had a motion, I believe?
Yes, sixty-five days.
Both or one, Judy?
I, both, I said both.
Yep. I'll second that.
Um, is there any reason to hold up on this one?
No, the sooner we get that, we're done, the better.
I said both, I made, I said both agreements.
Yeah, that's what I mean, she said both agreements. Yeah.
That's the motion.
Yeah, okay.
I seconded it.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Get those two off there.
Okay, do we officially want to set this start date at April?
In the spring? I, I don't think that there's enough time in the fall.
I don't think so either.
No, I don't think so either.
I think that's just setting us up for a lot of trouble.
Or do we want to give an option of completing the whole work by the first of November or not starting until April? I don't know, I need to talk to the state on that one.
That's, they're just, the asphalt plants are going to close and he's going to say my hands are tied, uh.
Then we're leaving it up for a lot of winter trouble.
No, we're, we're too late. That's too big a project for, that's not just a little.
I will pass the word along, the board wishes to start on April one.
Weather permitting.
Well, yeah, and, and, you know, you know, May one latest, you know?
Well.
We need to give them a, you know, we say April first.
Okay, between April one and May one.
Yes, thank you. We've been burned before.
Okay, we have our, the liquid accounts that just appeared.
What you have on your table is a listing of all of the accounts receivable as of June thirty, uh, two thousand nineteen. I have indicated with asterisks those accounts who have a. I have indicated with asterisks those accounts who have agreements. Uh, there's a couple in there that have question marks on them, uh, the Burgess House for one, which would be a tax sale situation because they haven't set something up, and there is a one, two that have leads on them, which are up in Pittsburgh, uh, leads are filed, but they haven't paid and they're not there to dig anyway. And one that, uh, there's one other that I had a special mark on. That we...
So Stan, you know what I'm going to ask, where can we get the, the other list for our next meeting?
What other list?
You know, the ones that are on the payment plans, who, whether they're current or not.
Oh, okay, yes.
And who we're going to turn off next.
That's, that's what I'm looking for, is how to rate them. Essentially, all we would, like we did last time, was to do four or five in each week.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the problem with that, of course, is if they don't run in and sign an agreement to keep from getting shut off, then we got the labor and time involved in shutting them off, which is including some of them, so, yes, but I would yet start with the higher ones that aren't on agreement for notices, or checking the agreement to see whether they are keeping up with it.
That's the other thing I'd really like to see, is to make sure that we have people current.
That's where I'm at, I want to see if the agreements are being held.
But this is all of the delinquents. Uh, Celia has been working with Limerick to come up with a method of charging interest on overdue accounts on current, for the, starting with the 2000 year. I believe she has come up with her method that will work for them, so it'll show up on the bill as an account receivable, which is what you've got here, and then the new billing, which will start, uh, this year for the new rates.
Great, good question. And could we modify the list here, just to, you know, give us the top 20? I mean, some of these are $460, we don't need to see those.
Well, that's, that's what I did last year, I mean, I took a, a line before.
Yeah.
But these just came out at, what, 3 o'clock today? This afternoon, so, really, we can...
Okay, the next meeting we'll have...
Joe has a question. He's a question.
Joe has a question.
Is our receivable situation better than it's been, or worse than it's been? The trend's going okay, where you want it, it come down all the time?
Well, the, the bottom line is about 105,000 delinquent for each water and four sewer. Uh, at January of last year, it was 84,000, I believe, so, but this has picked up everybody who didn't pay their bill this year, which wasn't into January. We have collected a lot, there are still some that are waiting to have transfers, which will be paid in full, uh, those that we are aware of, we would note that when I send you. But this is, give it off to the sheet.
Yeah.
We believe it's getting better, Joe.
Yeah.
Slowly.
Anything else for water? Hearing none, seeing none, uh, motion to go on the board's sewer commissioners.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in the board of sewer commissioners, you have your Simon's report in your packet. Any questions?
Willow Street, how are we doing down there, Stan?
This is, we signed the contract with A and B, uh, the waters guys have been out and located all the man, the sewer guys, state guys, located all the manholes. Uh, the next thing is for a contract for cleaning, uh, doing evaluation of each manhole, and then DVA the line, and then come up with recommendations for a project. Uh, we had the issue at the end of the box culvert that comes under the railroad tracks, where there was a huge inflow going into the pipe, I think, I've passed out pictures showing what that was going on. Uh, right now, it is, of course, not doing it because of the drier weather, uh, hopefully this will be a project which will evolve out of what, uh, we're doing with the study. So, once the study is done, there will be a construction project there, which will be back on your table.
So I noticed on here, there's some comment about rags on the Goran Bridge Road and the Willow Street, a lot of rags are accumulating in this area, do we have any idea where this is coming from?
No, a lot of them are wipes that are non-biodegradable, uh, the wipes that are kind of break up in the system before they get to the pump, it's a matter of, the ones that aren't, end up there. I think this is an issue that the state has taken to the legislature to ban some of the wipes that are out there. The rag is a term that they're using, but really, it's, it's the wipes that are being used, whether they're baby wipes or whether they're adult. Down at the bottom is the boat replacement, and I've got a price on a boat, I'm looking for a better price. If this is, yeah, a little bit of boats is down there leaks, and the plastic boat they got is not stable for two people to get in, especially two people the size that we have.
Place where you want that.
So if anybody wants a plastic boat, we got one down there, they, they offered it to the pool.
Good news.
As long as we sanitize it.
Yes.
I imagine.
Well, I guess we've covered the delinquent accounts, anything else for sewer commissioners? If not, uh, let us return to the regular select board, I think everybody's signed the orders. Beaver Pond.
What you have in your packet is, uh, the Beaver Pond Committee's response to a complaint that was registered with the Agency of Natural Resources, uh, the letter from, uh, Laura D., notes that the complaint was issued, they wanted investigation. Uh, what we provided back was the map showing the area that was, uh, filled and cleaned, what it looked like, may have looked like before, looking at the existing conditions, and then what it looks like now. An update on that, and I think I, uh, may have copied you with it, is I had received a call from the enforcement officer in the Rutland Office who received a complaint through the system also. He was not aware of, that Laura had contacted us, she's on vacation this week, he will get back together with her, uh, next week and issue a report to address the complaint. Uh, he has been over here and looked at it, he doesn't see anything seriously wrong with what we have done, but we will wait until, uh, they get together and issue a report on the complaints. Uh, right now, work has stopped, we're not proceeding anymore until we hear back for bid. All right?
What is the complaint? What is the complaint?
We, we're not sure, they won't divulge.
Are you talking about the cutting of the trees or no?
Yeah.
There's somebody that doesn't want some of the trees cut.
He said, "What is the nature of the complaint?", not "Who is the complainant?"
The complaint, as included in the letter and its review, is, "I have received a few complaints over the past few weeks about trees being cut down all around the shoreline of Beaver Pond. I wanted to alert you to the fact that the vegetation around Beaver Pond is protected under the Shoreline Protection Act, and the creation of cleared areas requires a shoreline permit. There is some allowable vegetation management that can be done without a permit, provided it adheres to the vegetation protection standards, and a copy of that was included with the packet that went to the select board. Uh, so until such time as we get a report back as to whether we have complied with the protection standards, activities in the lakeside zone that do not require a shoreline permit or regulation. Removal of 250 square feet of vegetation under three feet in height, 25 feet from the bead water level, is allowed as long as the vegetation protection standards are met and the duff layer is not removed. Pruning of branches on the lower one-third of a tree is, height is allowed. Establishing one six-foot wide pathway down to the lake is allowed. Removal of dead, diseased, or unsafe trees is allowed. Management, print, cutting, pruning, print of individual trees that are not part of the natural vegetation, but are instead part of a garden or landscape area as of July 1, 2014. Cutting of trees in accordance with the vegetation protection standards. Removal of noxious and nuisance species. Those are the items that are allowed, and there are charts in this attachment, I would be happy to provide anybody with a copy who would, who would like them, I assume they may have them already. However, we will get official word sometime next week as to whether we violated the Shoreline Protection Act.
With the, with the gentleman from the Rutland Office?
He didn't see, was not...
He came over and looked the situation over.
Bruce, I'm going to blame this on to you guys, because I was on the board when we took over Beaver Pond, and I know, because I got canceled to the lake, you don't touch the shoreline, that's a fish habitat, and I think you all know that.
No, I just, I just had the Shoreline Protection Girl from Opelia come down and, about building a seawall to stop erosion.
Yeah.
She said there wasn't an issue, as long as I didn't use concrete.
Right, but I'm just saying, you got to report it.
No, you said you can't touch it.
We can't, we can't, out in the lake, they can't, we ain't supposed to touch it.
You can get a permit?
We have to get a permit, and we have to go through the state.
Right. You didn't say that, though, you said you can't touch it.
Well, you shouldn't touch it until you get...
The committee wasn't in touch with the state way back when we started the project down by Beaver Pond, and they told us what we could cut and what we couldn't cut, what we could touch and what we shouldn't touch.
Yes, so...
So that's what they did, and they pretty much, you know, they stayed to those standards, they knew they couldn't cut certain sized trees, go into the water and pull things, cut certain kinds of grass.
Touchy situation, that's what I'm saying.
Well, the, this gentleman from the Rutland Office, uh, has been over and looked at it, so...
Patrick, uh...
Oh, gosh.
Luke, Luke. He's the enforcement officer.
For, um... We're just waiting for an official letter from the, the head of that division. Anything else for Beaver Pond? Okay. Parking wreck, well, we already covered that, that was the rink.
We're not meeting until Wednesday, we haven't met.
Okay, the town office, wall.
We are looking for a pre-construction conference, hopefully this Friday morning, uh, to meet with the contractor, to lay out what his schedule is and what his work process is going to be.
Do you know what his start date is?
Uh, we gave him a start date of today, but he's not going to start until after we have a pre-construction conference, but that'll tell us when.
Wednesday?
Right.
Friday. That's what we hope, if it isn't set to stone yet.
So, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So, if it doesn't happen Friday, how long are we going to let this go before this pre-conference happens? I just don't want to get into the same thing, and it gets put off, and then it's, it's cold, and they're not going to want to do it. So, I, I just want to be sure this is going to get done this year.
Yeah.
As far as I know, I mean, they, they were anxious to get started, uh, what we put was just they slowed down until we talked with you, we also need to talk with the neighbors, because if you look at the parking lot, you'll see the red dots on the ground, that's our property line.
And you've made arrangements for the town office to go to the other building, correct?
Well, not for this, not for the wall.
So it won't bother them?
No, this won't have anything to do with the other office.
Perfect.
We will be replacing the service, sewer service line to the building as part of this project, because it goes under a portion of the wall.
What time's that pre-construction?
We don't know yet.
I know, I, I, the last one I said was, "As early as possible", with a 9:00 question mark after it.
Nothing on the renovations, then?
No.
No.
We're still filling out paperwork, uh, getting the, what you approved for the Section 106 review, and also for the environmental review, those we could do right now. After that, it's a matter of submitting the application and waiting until October to see if you get the money. I think the question is going to be for the board, is whether you want to wait that long to go out for bids, or whether we could, can wait that long to go out for bids. If the state says they will, we could build it, and then they will consider the grant, uh, that would be one problem. If they say, "You need to have the grant offer before you advertise, then we're looking at wintertime construction." And that's, uh, we're just slowly going through the grant process, the application is due by, in September, first part of September.
Can I ask one quick question? The, the wall, what do you, what do you think it's going to be like, brother?
I would hopes that they would take up less than a month to do it, but...
The price, he's asking the price, Stan. The price, the final, yeah.
Ninety thousand, hundred thousand, we got a $20,000 grant from the, from the state Historic Preservation Protection. What was the, what was the price that the town people have to pay? What's, what's the total cost of the taxpayers? I don't have the contract with me, John.
It was...
Was it $70, $80?
We voted on it on the special town meeting.
Right, yeah, right.
Think the whole contract was, yeah, $96,000.
With, without the $20,000 yet.
Did you receive the grant, the $100,000 to the Monticelli Development Program?
Yes, that's the application that we will be submitting in September. That's for the renovations.
We haven't received the grant.
No, it isn't until September.
But that's what we're doing, the paperwork on route, to get it ready for the grant application.
The historic preservation is $20,000.
Historic preservation is contributing to the wall.
The front wall.
The, the Economic Development Accessibility Grant, which is the $100,000, would apply to strictly the lift of the stairs exterior, and that's going through a historic review right now as to the architectural treatment of the facility. So that's sitting at the state also, so that, the pieces are moving, but again, they're moving slow.
Okay, uh, mosquitoes, I think we're all happy with what's, uh, what the results are of the spring that we've had, and...
The district is...
Yeah, there's some brochures on the table, um, and there'll be brochures at the town office, and here at the library, I would imagine, and probably over at the market.
Is it possible to put it on the website?
I could, I could leak to it, but I can't publish the whole, but I, but I could leak to it, yes.
That'd be great, if you could do that, that'd be great, thank you.
I've got to update the website anyway, because Bruce found out that 2:00 is when they post the notice of, of the spring.
Right, yes.
And so I'm going to leak their website onto our website, and I can leak this brochure at the same time.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, we talked briefly at the last meeting, do you think there's enough interest to call them? Do you think there's enough interest to call a meeting for Neighborhood Watch if there's a group that wants to do this? It didn't appear to be.
I think we should take it off the agenda, because I think so. I don't think it's...
I think it's up to that group. If they want to, if they want to do it, they can.
Yeah, it has no bearing other than having a representative.
No, and if they form a group, we'll be glad to have a representative on that, but it's...
Interest seems to have dropped off here.
Yes, definitely.
Can I ask a question about mosquitoes? The last meeting seemed to be a bit of confusion whether we were still operating under the $15,000, or if we were starting again now that we're in July 1, $12,000. So I'm curious where we are.
I didn't check. I don't know.
I believe we're covered for the whole season.
The summer, that's the way I understand it, but I'm not certain.
Their accounting system is in January to December.
Okay, that's what we want to say.
We're worrying for $15,000 as if we were a full member. What they are keeping track of is what the cost is to handle, Proctor, and I think you addressed that at the last meeting regarding the backyards. They'll give us a number for budgeting in the fall as to what we should include in next year's budget. What we have included in the 2020 budget so far is $12,000. We would be looking at putting into the 20, 2021 budget any makeup or difference and what might be needed for the following year. So they're working on calendars, so we've got to work with them.
That would work, yeah.
So, do we also have the option, though, if we have surplus when we close out the books, to vote at town meeting to put part of that surplus towards mosquitoes?
That's something that could be requested the board could act on.
But we don't, it's not like you don't use it, you lose it.
What, the surplus?
Right.
The surplus, if you don't use it, it has to be used to reduce taxes or something that the town voters vote on. So that's why the articles were on the last town meeting agenda.
So Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're talking about is the actual amount that we budgeted for mosquitoes for this fiscal year?
So my question was, I'm assuming that we've already paid for $15,000 prior to July 1?
Yes.
So we have $12,000 starting now, going from July 1 to June 30. But we already know that we expended $15,000, and that is covering, has covered more, they're not really counting. So the number's going to be much higher, is the expectation in September, when they tell us. When we close out the books here in another month or so, if there's a surplus on the books, we have two options. The option is it rolls over to reduce taxes, or you can put that money and say in March, the $12,000 that is left for surplus, you can leave that to the voters to vote in March. It's my understanding if it doesn't pass, then it becomes retroactive back against taxes.
What I will be putting into the draft budget is an estimated cost for 2021 rates or fees for mosquito control. If he comes back and says, "Well, you know, you did for 50, but it really cost us 20," we would be asking for 20 for their 2020, 21 season. Then, then we would have to put 8,000.
Put another $8,000.
Yeah, but there's no reason to play catch-up if you have a surplus. There's no reason to be behind the eight ball and have to, then you're going to ask us for 28,000, and there could have been surplus that we could have expended, and we're paying back as opposed to staying level.
That's, yeah. How the board wants to finance the mosquito control, we'll cover up when we do the final audit and we find out what the ballots, the carryover surplus is in the general fund. And again, following the procedure we have in the past, is that we reserve part of that surplus for cash flow. We can't use it for budgeting, but we could use it for cash flow if revenue doesn't come in as anticipated. So we've used 15% for cash flow. That was a recommendation from the auditors, keep it, keep it over, keep it liquid. Anything over that, in the past years, we have reduced taxes by, I think last year it was $50,000, that surplus we put to reduce taxes. The year before it was somewhere around $30,000. That's a, that's a recommendation that Celia and I make to the select board when we get to that point. At that point is probably next week to set taxes. Right now, there is very little above the 15% that we try to carry over, because we have spent some of it this year.
So we can decide which way later.
Yes, yeah, they won't true up till September, October on the mosquitoes and...
But, yeah, anytime before March, you can put something on the ballot to expend it. We will have a good idea as to, we know what's there now. We'll, once I get the final budget reports, which you don't have in front of you tonight, because I waited for them to enter all of the bills before I tried to print it out. But I will hopefully get that to you within the week of what I think the June 30 numbers are going to be.
We have in your packet the ground maintenance ordinance. Anybody see anything that they would like to change?
No, I don't want to change it. I want to reinforce it.
Well, yeah.
I have inspected both properties that are noted, 22 Gibbs Street and 6 Green Square. These were complaints by neighboring property owners. There's no question of 6 Green Square, that it has grown up and needs to be whacked. There's no question on 22 Gibbs Street. 22 Gibbs Street is a, not an order occupied, so the, the report will go to the property owner and not to the resident. So if you agree in accordance with the ordinance, if the select board accepts the finding, it shall give the property owner notice of a failure to maintain the property and demand that the property be brought into compliance with the applicable requirements immediately, and no event later than 30 days. So that's the verbiage I will put into the letter that goes to the two property owners.
The one on Green Square also has what, back taxes, is it?
There's a lot.
Back taxes, after taxes due on that one? Something due on it? I saw it in here.
I don't think there is.
Because he's, he's current on two properties, but not on that one.
It's Riley Jones.
Right. He's current on two, not on that.
I'll make a motion to find both properties in violation of the grounds maintenance ordinance.
Yes.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's another one too, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There's another one too on School Street, the corner of school and high.
School and high.
That lot, there's the house and then the lot, and that's, the grass is like, I mean, it's like a jungle in there now.
Oh, between houses and...
It's right across the street from, um...
Well, Terazewicz's.
Terazewicz's house. Well, Terazewicz.
Yeah, and he's on High Street.
It was the, it's the Maroon House that sets up a little from it, and then they, they have that lot that comes down.
Yeah, I don't know whether that was sold with the house.
I, you know, I still haven't located the property that I'm buying.
Okay, it's, um...
It's at School Street, covering down the hill?
You're at the school and you come down the hill, it's the very last house on your right, it's Maroon, and then they have a little bank, bankment and a lot, a little place down below.
There's a lot there.
That's what the trailer is?
Yeah.
You got it there?
No, no trailer.
It's just a vacant lot?
Just, yeah, it's part of their land, it's, yeah. It just used to always be maintained and mowed, and now it's like... How about the Irving property? Have they been approached?
He just, Stan called there this afternoon, Irving's, yeah.
What'd they say?
The corner? Yes, I get it, I know.
The person I talked to is going to have somebody call me back. Every year when I call them, somebody shows up within a week and whacks, whacks the lot. They've been very good about it.
So can we start finding them when they don't do it consistently?
If they don't do it.
I mean, that you shouldn't have to have a phone call time to them.
You'd still have to send them a letter every time.
Right.
If I didn't, I'd bring it to you and have to send them a letter, and then give them 30 days. I think they'll show up within the 30 days. As I say, I've had good experience with them in the past.
Yeah. And it's actually listed as 19 West Street.
19 West Street.
West Street, rather than Beaver Pond.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that house used to face West Street. I remember that kid.
Yeah. So...
Okay.
Junk vehicles.
Um, and what's going on with way out on West Street?
Okay, that, the last meeting I was at, a couple of members of the select board were going to down and talk with the, with the owners.
And I had a incorrect phone number for them, so I will try to touch base with her.
But the other part is whether you issue tickets to them. That's, you know, that's the only resolution that you have, the only penalty is to imply a penalty.
Is it worth the trip?
So why wouldn't we ticket them? I mean, I'm sure they won't pay, but...
Well, I mean, ticket them is, is a matter of their, their position, but, yeah. The idea was that maybe talking to them could be beneficial, but...
Yeah, but it's, I mean, it's habitual, it's never going to change, it's always...
No, it's not.
That's right.
Right. It's not going to change. Has, has there ever been a conversation of maybe some screening?
About four years ago, yes.
And how did that conversation go?
And, and the, the vehicles were moved and the junk was cleaned up after about three dumpsters worth of it, but it didn't last that long.
It was, it was five dumpsters.
They just seem to bring stuff in.
Is it worth the trip?
I could contact the sheriff's department and have them issue a fine, yeah. That may make whoever goes down, meet with them.
Yeah, I know.
I guess the question is, how does everybody feel? Is it worth the trip to go down and have a conversation, or are we beyond having any more conversations?
I don't know. I almost think so, but...
I don't think it's going to matter.
No, I don't.
I don't either.
No.
So I say...
Why don't we...
Huh?
Like the dog's situation lasted six months.
Yeah, it's dragging it out, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's find them.
Yes, let's go ahead with that one.
Majority's opinion?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
They won't pay the fine anyways.
What?
They don't pay them anyway, John.
They don't pay them anyway.
I don't, I don't have the ordinance with me.
Hang on, I might get the first, I might have the ordinance, hang on.
It's the junk, it's the junk vehicle ordinance.
That's the junk ordinance.
Right. I have a bunch of ordinance's sitting here, because I was reading them.
But I don't think that...
I don't think I have that one, I have traffic.
My other plan was going to be, you should get meaningful fine, not a $10 fine.
I agree, yes.
It's not a penance, I know it's at least, it's over $100.
Yeah, I think the first one is close to 100, and then it jumps up to maybe 250 or 3 on the second time. So I don't know if we have fined, I don't remember whether we have fined them.
We have fined them in the past. We have not fined them yet.
We have, okay.
So let's just do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a...
Bruce, when I was on the board, I think we fined them three times and they didn't do any good, until you had somebody here on their doorstep all the time, and I was out of office then, just keep banging on it, and that's the only way you're going to get it cleaned up. It took five roll-off boxes when I was on the board, five, just to do the fox yard. They know the system, they know how it works, so you can fine them all you want.
Well, let's, let's start with that, and if it gets to the second time around, yeah.
Can we place a lien on it?
For fines? I think fines are probably on automatically, but I could check on that.
I thought that fines were judicial.
Traffic tickets, basically.
Yes, they're traffic tickets.
They go over to White River to the traffic court.
Judicial Bureau or Judicial Board.
Yeah. Okay, 37 East, although the, the letter says 39.
It should be 37, yes.
Yeah.
Who is that?
Oh, yeah, 37.
Yeah.
Have you got an email on that one? Yes, it is in violation. We sent them a letter, their 30 days are up.
Yeah.
No, the 30 days aren't up yet. Stayed at July 1.
Yeah, okay, so...
Next month.
Yeah, next month, so...
Then the new ones, I think, are next.
And we got the new ones that you've got to declare violation.
The 6 Beaver Pond, I don't, I don't see what's there.
It's, you can't, because of all the grass, but if you go by...
There's a car.
There's a green, there's a blue sedan that's parked right up on the lawn.
Because the house that's six, is six number, there's a house with six.
It's next to the vacant lot.
Right.
It's, it's on their property, it used to be my grandmother's house, so it's on their property.
So the impound is on the...
On 6 Beaver Ponds.
It is, behind like the house or something?
No, it's right, right next to the lot, so you've got the house, you've got the side yard, you've got the car, and then you've got the Irving Oil lot.
Okay. Oh, I didn't see it when I went back to them.
It's, it's not to pick up, if you're not coming from the, if you're coming from Beaver Pond.
Oh, you can see it better?
Yeah, because that, that grass is higher than the car.
Yeah, you can't see it if you come up...
No, you'll never see it.
West Street and look up the hill, no.
Okay.
So I want to find those, I think you got to find them a violation, right?
Yeah, that's a good violation.
We're going to find those three vehicles in violation of the junk vehicle ordinance.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, 20, 2544 down on West Road.
I think you included all of those.
Yeah, I included them.
The motion took care of 6 Beaver Pond and 2544 and 22 Gibbs.
Yeah, 22 Gibbs.
Yep.
And Market Street.
Market Street is a separate item.
Yeah.
What are we going to...
The notice was mailed back in, originally last year.
So we got to start all over again, is the point, I guess.
Yeah.
Do we have to start over?
I don't think so, but I, I, we issued the notice, again, I've talked with the owner of the property, the vehicle does not belong to the owner. Last January, he told me he was going to get, declared an abandoned vehicle so he could truck it off until such time as he gets motor vehicle to say it's abandoned. However, then it was covered with snow and he couldn't get to it, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, I talked to him again on Friday, and said, "Please get it out of there." So I think he made, but...
It's been seven months.
Seven months.
Yeah.
We, we could send a ticket to it.
It's actually been more than seven months, because the first letter never got to him.
Yeah, he never delivered.
Working on this since almost October.
Okay, so the first letter went out December?
The, the letter that you received went out in December.
You know, I realize you're a longtime Proctor resident and a, and a business owner, but, you know, we still have to treat everybody the same.
Yeah, he also speaks a lot down my street.
Hmm.
He does. He got a ticket from my house once.
Really?
Well, you know.
So, I can send him a notice of a fine.
Especially if it's not his car, then you should have who owns it, move it.
He knows who's it is. He knows whose it is.
I know.
Yeah.
So let's get a ticket, please, Stan.
Yes.
Sounds good. The car on Church Street, Proctor Place.
That white vehicle?
White vehicle?
Didn't make the list.
That's not, that's not here. Uh, I, Carter investigated it, said it was not registered. Uh, I asked him who the owner was, because I don't know who the owner was. Uh, he said, I can't tell you who the owner is, so I contacted Proctor Place to find out who the owner is. The person I talked to at Proctor Place, their vanguard said, uh, we don't have it listed anywhere in our information as to who owns that vehicle. Uh, my next step is to have it towed, it is sitting on town right of way, so it's just tow it out.
Do you think it's a, a Proctor Place resident?
I think it is.
Let's tow it around to their big parking lot and let them deal with it. 'Cause I mean, where are you gonna tow it to?
Where are we gonna tow it to? We're gonna, we're gonna tow it to some towing company who is gonna put it in their storage, charge rates to whoever wants to pick it up.
Yeah. The shape that car is in, he's good, the storage is coming.
Yeah.
So... Did Carter just run, I'm sorry, the registration?
Thank, there is no register, but if he knows who it belongs to, then he can ticket it.
He can ticket it.
So I think he needs to do that. Because if he knows who it own, he knows where they live, or he can find out.
He can find out their name.
Exactly.
Yeah, he may not be able to find out where they live.
Yes. No, he knows.
They can.
Anyway, yes, we'll send him the ticket before we tow it. What I was trying to do is talk to the person before we tow it.
That's fine.
But I haven't been able to catch up to it, so...
Yeah.
There's also two down on the other side of School Street.
The other side of where?
The other side of School Street, um, where, one is for sale, so that might be an option, he's just trying to sell it. But the other one is parked in the driveway, I don't believe it's registered or, I don't even know if that's plates, in the trailer right across from, um, the oil company.
At the trailer?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we could send out the notice to...
Right across from the officers.
Again, I, I don't, whatever they call, really, to raise issues of cars I see, and Carter doesn't raise issue to cars. He sees what he's looking for is an order from the Select Board to please investigate, which is a good, the best procedure.
Yeah, that's been there for...
It may not be the quickest procedure, but it's the best procedure. You see, there's two cars up...
Well, there's one right before it, the host before it.
The wheels are in the ground, I mean, like buried.
With the for sale sign on it?
It's in the ground.
Okay, yes, I think it's been for sale a while. I don't think it's selling right now.
Is the officer issuing tickets for bringing notices of violation without the Select Board? Is that within his purp- I'm, I'm just reading through the, the packet and it seems like he asked a pertinent question in his email that seems to be the equity of how the ordinance is being applied.
I believe the ordinance reads, and again, I don't have it in front of me, that this town has to find them in violation of the, of the ordinance.
I don't think that's exactly the question that he was asking.
Well, she's asking, is it being enforced equally?
Is it being enforced equally? Uh, as I say, I respond to requests from the board to investigate things. Carter responds to what I ask him to investigate, and we bring it back out of the table.
So that's why I think I always bring up ones I see, 'cause I feel like if some are being ticketed and some aren't, it's not fair, so...
Exactly.
If I see one that, it might sound tedious or, oh, here's a car, here's a car, but if somebody's being ticketed and someone else isn't because we just didn't drive by and see it...
Yeah.
Then, you know, that's why I think it's good to bring everyone...
I agree.
To the table.
Yeah.
Is that what you're...
But that doesn't act exactly address is common in the email, but...
Yeah.
Well, he could certainly bring up any issues he has, I'm sure, to Stan.
I, I don't understand what he's talking about leaving a town employee alone in his email. I don't understand what he's getting at there.
Could be.
I think that's what...
I'm just asking how, how the enforcement, that seems to be the essence of this question.
Yeah.
Um, we could ask the share, I mean, he does patrol the whole town every week, basically. If he comes across something, ask him to keep his eye out for unregistered vehicles? Would that help? Would you mind asking him that, Stan?
Yeah.
We could do it, I mean, we could ask him to keep his eye out for unregistered vehicles.
Yeah.
As I say, to date, it's been, I react to your...
Yeah.
We, we get a complaint from somebody, I react to yours.
Oh, I know who he's talking about.
Yeah.
I know who he's talking about.
The question is, how, how aggressive do you want to get it?
So when I read this, it's something that I wanna research a little bit on my own and see what's going on, 'cause...
That's what I think.
Bruce, can I have a copy of that, please?
Copy of what?
Of the ordinance. Are you guys okay?
The, the junk vehicle ordinance?
The ordinance, you have, yeah.
On the vehicles?
I don't think I have a complete copy of the junk.
I don't have it.
There's too many loopholes in that.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have one here.
It is on the town website, though.
Yeah, it's on the website.
And I have a stack of them, but not that one.
So the answer is, John, we can't get it to you right now, but...
No.
There's too many loopholes in it, I can tell you that right now. And I think you're hitting the nail on the head, there's a lot of loopholes.
Oh, I, I would call it a loophole, it's an enforcement issue.
Right.
Um, loopholes are ambiguity in the actual law, in the ordinance.
What do you call a motorized vehicle? A four-wheeler is a motorized.
Great, I do whatever the state of Vermont defines.
You know what I'm saying? And half of them are not even registered, so there's the loophole.
Well, that's not a loophole, 'cause we're talking about junk vehicles, and this is also an ordinance that originated from Vermont, leads to cities and towns. So it's pretty accurate. I mean, you would have to change it and it has to go back to them. It's not about four-wheelers, it's about junk vehicles.
You might think it's junk, but for the homeowner, it might not be junk, that's where the issue...
But if you look at the ordinance, John, that's, it has to be registered, it has to be, um, has plates. If it's screened, that's one thing, I mean, that's very clear in that ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah. And, you know, usually something that comes out of a BLCT is pretty, they've gone as far as the statute will allow in most cases. Okay, um, well, we don't have the budget reports, so...
Hopefully I will get it out to you and email it to you.
Yeah.
Or make a good copy.
Yeah, Sheriff's Department, uh, report, any, anything that anybody saw that was...
Nothing jumped out at me.
No.
Myself either, but what about the traffic ordinance that's on the agenda?
That was, Bruce asked me to put it on to remind me that I owe you a new draft.
Yes.
And that to get it done, so that we can move on to the next one.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe the next one, um, maybe I could stop and get a few copies and deliver them, so we got a little more time to look at them.
Okay, maybe what, my, my, the new...
The new, yes.
New draft.
Well, the new traffic or whatever ordinance we are gonna go on after the traffic, you know, give us just a little more time to...
I'd like to review it, too.
One of the ones that I'm gonna suggest is gonna be the, the purchase policy. Which is, which is getting old and really out of date with inflation.
Okay.
Yeah, the dollar amounts are...
Good. Yeah, we try and do one a month or one every two months, uh...
Yeah.
With changes, we can get them done.
Okay, um, we have a a item for executive session.
Before we do that, how are we doing, I have a question about the dog licenses, how's that coming? 'Cause isn't there, dog licenses, isn't there a list that goes to the share?
That was the last memo that I sent to Carter, is that we still need the dog survey.
Okay, how long do you think that will be?
I haven't got a clue until I can get them online.
Okay, awesome.
Do we have to take any action with this before we go into executive session?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, the, thank you, man.
Yeah.
There is an admission, the lister, I think she explained herself fairly clean. It was a piece of property that during reappraisal had two tenths of an acre too much on it. Uh, it got changed, but the value did not get changed. And so now it's, uh, it, it swiped one way to the other, so she wants to set the list to current value at 113,000,520.
Yeah.
Not two tenths.
As opposed to 113,000,640.
And it's actually one one-hundredth of an acre difference.
Yes, yes.
So it's pretty, my big feet probably wouldn't fit on it.
Yeah.
So the, but in order to make the change, she needs, since the grant list has been lodged, she needs approval from the Select Board as an error or an admission.
I make a move, I move to make the correction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?
One other item, which is not on the agenda, but, uh... The library has posted some signs on the trail that says, "No dogs per town ordinance." So the question was just so that the Select Board knows that the signs are up and it does say, "Per town ordinance, dogs shall be on a leash."
Right, so it's not no dogs, it's just they have to be on a leash.
Right, okay.
Yes, we do.
Yep.
Well, that's just, I wanted you to all vote it.
Was the Pine Hill Park Carriage Trail notified of this?
Yes.
They were notified prior than getting to a meeting. So I don't know if you didn't stand notify them, but the Library Board and Trustee had a meeting with them prior to ordering some and talked about the issue of dogs running, which is an issue of which we've had multiple complaints about, of where they call here about people on the trail with their dogs running. There have been people that have been, um, had dogs and where they felt they were in peril to be attacked. Um, and it's been an ongoing issue, and so we chose to take action on our property.
Good. I, I thought any dog in Proctor had to be on a leash or under the owner's control.
It, it's just like, you're supposed to be picking up the poo, too. And this morning when we arrived, there were three bags here, so, you know, there's a lot of things that dog owners should be doing and apparently they choose to pick and choose, so it started to get really annoying.
I'm with you.
Since we're on the subject, the Marble Museum complained about, uh, dog poo being deposited in their trash cans.
Okay, I've heard that one.
Oh.
And, and Mr. Johnson's trash can out there. Run Wednesday's.
There's some in the town trash can, too, but I figure that's a better place than someplace else. And according to the solid waste district, that's the place it needs to go because they don't want it in their food waste compost.
Okay.
Is there a, is there a ticket of offense in the, in the ordinance for people not picking up the poo?
Yes.
You gotta tick the law up.
Yes, there is. But again, it needs to be seen by the enforcement officer or a signed complaint by somebody else, stating the name, et cetera. I think the last, after one meeting, was my, uh, email to the deputies was, would you please monitor the park? Not necessarily stake out there 24/7, but, yeah, monitor who is out there and whether they are picking it up.
Yeah.
Well, I guess people should also get perhaps use and smile, because there's probably gonna be a lot more of the possibility of them being on camera. And then it won't be such a debate, so...
Yeah.
And, and maybe those will be the next signs that might be going up, smile, you're on camera, because it's disrespectful and it, it's crossed the line now. You know, people encroach on essentially what is public, uh, private property here. Um, this is not town property, the town does not maintain this property, nor, not that I think that they should be leaving their poo on the town green or someplace like that, but, you know, it's, it's just despicable behavior. And this handful of dog owners are giving everyone that's a dog owner a bad rap.
Yes, it is, and it is also a health hazard. It is not a natural composting item.
It's disgusting paper bag, plastic bags when it's been warm on the asphalt for a few days, too, so... And maybe that's something the officer could do when people are out with their dogs. You know how it likes to stop and have conversations with kids or stop to the pool to say hi? Maybe just remind owners that, you know, it's, you know, to, to be respectful of property. So, they're always happy, it appears, when I read the report, to stop and chat with people as part of their neighborhood coming and going, so...
Anything else for the regular Select Board before we get a motion to go into...
I make a motion to go into executive session?
Second that.
Or, uh, insurance claim.